All right, the meeting is called to order. Can we hear the roll?
Greg Strike.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Taylor Robinson and Seth Anderson are excused. Thank you.
And is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Commissioner Strike. Any objection? Seconded by Commissioner Looney. Any objection? Seeing no objection. Minutes are approved. Moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Gardner?
No disclosures. Other than that, I was absent for case numbers 2019, 4, 47, and 48.
All right. Commissioner Strike?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures. Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I'd like to disclose that for public hearings, three and four, which is case 2018-026 and case S-12479, the company I work with, C W Engineering, is representing the municipality in that, and I think I'll have to recuse myself from that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, on the consent agenda, item B, Resolution 2019-007, case 2019-0047, I was recused and will not be voting on that.
So, based on the fact that we have two commissioners separately, that were not available for any of the items on the consent agenda, I am just going to postpone because we don't have enough to even make a motion to postpone, and those will be postponed till our next meeting. As a side note, this is a, if the Assembly reads these notes, this is a huge urge for them and for the mayor, that we do need additional members on the Planning Commission because we should not be forcing petitioners to be coming up to short boards, and we should be getting these things routinely approved. Moving on to public hearings, we will not even have enough members to address G3 and G4 staff. Do you know how we will, as just a note for the petitioners, how we will move forward for them when they'll be next up?
Through the chair, to the commission, yeah, it will be put on the next available agenda, and hopefully, it'll be next Monday. Hopefully, we have a quorum to hear that case.
And again, I just want to say that I'm sorry we do not have a full board at the moment, and I am equally disappointed, as I'm sure you are, and hopefully, this will be rectified soon. For public hearings G1 and 2, we'll have a short board. The process when there is a short, five-member board or commission, a postponement is offered to and agreed to by the petitioner. They'll be moved to the, they'll be moved to the next regular agenda. This should occur within 30 days, which does not require re-noticing the case, new public hearing notices, or advertising. If the petitioner is willing to postpone but unable to attend the next available meeting date within 30 days, the petitioner has a one-time-only option to choose the next date certain he or she can attend at no extra fee. When a postponement is requested by the petitioner, there is a rescheduling fee, and a new public hearing date shall be determined by the Planning Department. This will put their case in the next available cutoff date queue as if they were submitting their case for the first For the petitioners for items 1 and 2 on the agenda, they have already opted off, so they would have to pay a fee if they postpone again. Could the petitioner for that case come up and let us know if you would like to proceed under a short board or not?
Thank you. We would like to proceed this evening.
All right, thank you. Before moving forward on these two items, is there a motion to combine items 1 and 2 to be heard at one point? Moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Strike. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, we will combine items G1 and 2. And I'll give the briefing on public hearings. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows: After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by the commission rules of procedure. Because the first, because these two agenda items have been combined, the time limits are doubled, so the petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will be given 20 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives groups, such as community councils, PTAs, will be given 10 minutes. Individuals will be given 6 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we hear the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, my colleague and I will be presenting two cases on this Grayling Land Development, LLC. The first one is the major site plan review, and then we'll go right into my colleague's presentation on the plat. Grayling Land Development, LLC is seeking site plan approval for an assisted living facility on an undeveloped tract of land located within baseball subdivision tract A to B. The site plan shows a two-story residential building that will house 107 dwelling units. This is a group living residential use in the B3 district, which is normally permitted by right. However, the special limitations per Assembly Ordinance 1997-150AA require a public hearing site plan review with the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the issuance of any building permit. So that's why the case is before you. The department reviewed the site plan and found that all of the standards of approval for site plan review are met with the conditions of approval recommended by the department on pages 1 through 15, on pages, or conditions of approval 1 through 15 on pages 12 and 13 of your packet. These address some of the specific design standards required for this type of development. Condition of approval number five, I'll highlight, it calls for the construction of a pathway from Fragment Lot 1 to the South Anchorage Sports Complex. The pathway will benefit the residents of the building, the staff that works there, the guests who come to the building, as well as Fragment Lots 2 and 3 that are proposed in my companion's case, and also Tract A3B to the south, which does not have a pathway except through Clat, the Clat Road sidewalk. This condition of approval is flexible enough for the petitioner to choose where and how to make the connection to the park. The designed ADA pathway for Tract A3B, they designed an ADA accessible pathway from Tract A3B, but it was never built. It was, there were two separate agreements that they entered into to build it, but it was put off to the development of this tract, Tract A2B, which is the case before you. It's now time for the, for them to build the pathway, or else it likely wouldn't happen because of the way that they've configured the site plan so that the building is close to the lot line. There's really not space for a pathway unless it's designed in at this time. The underlying plat note states that the traffic engineer decides the issue of the access. She's written that the pathway is required. You can see the traffic engineer's comments on page 17 of your packet. It's the second half of her paragraph. See also the memorandum of understanding by the current president of the Grayling Land Development, LLC company agreeing to delay the pathway that was required with the last development to be put off until the development of this tract A2B. That's on the bottom of page 33 of your packet. With that, we could probably move on to the plat.
Thank you, Francis. So in the case of S-12475, is the baseball subdivision plat. So this subdivision request seeks approval of a commercial tract that proposes to create three fragment lots to be developed under the requirements of AMC 2103200E within proposed tract A2B of the current baseball subdivision. In an adjoining case, as Francis mentioned, the property owners request an approval of major site plan review for an assisted living facility. The commission will need to approve both cases, as we've stated. The undeveloped property is owned B3 General Business District with special limitations. It's located south of O'Malley, west of C, and north of West Clat Road. A commercial tract is in allowed use in the B3 zoning district per AMC 2106020, that's table 2106-2. With the minimum 6,000 square foot lot area and the minimum 50-foot lot width is met for all the fragment lots. Road improvements and dedication, private development division has requested conditions of approval related to the building of a private street and providing a non-motorized pathway connection site to the South Anchorage Sports Park, to the south there. Also, so staff has requested that as a condition of approval, and staff has requested a condition of approval that the petitioner obtain an access agreement on municipal form for access to Tract A2B from Tract A3B and Tract A1 to provide a through connection that goes all the way from Clat Road through to, out to C Street eventually. So with that, the department recommends approval of A1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 of the staff packet found on page 8 and 9. Thank you, and we'll both answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, can we hear from the petitioner?
I can introduce myself, and then if it makes sense to the board, I'll defer the first part of the presentation to address the site plan review by Melissa Branch. She's with Big City Engineers, and she prepared the packet. And after Melissa's presentation, then perhaps if it works for the board, I can address the trail connection piece.
All right, and would you like to reserve any time for rebuttal?
I'll reserve two minutes.
Okay.
So Melissa Branch, B R A N C H, we have a housekeeping item that I'd like to propose. So for the case under G2, S-12475, the condition number 2, I would like the language revised to match the language of condition number 4 in 2019-0049, just so that they read the same, because they're related to the same thing, and it's the roadway. And then, that's really it before we... Yeah?
Just as a clarifying question, that was, was that for item number, for A2? Or was that?
Eight, three.
Eight, three? I just want to make sure I mark it right.
Hold on a sec, let me double check for you. So it's A2 for the S-12475 to be reworded to match number 4 on the 2019-0049.
Perfect, thanks. So just as a note for the commission members, it's labeled 3 here. We probably want to make it 2, but, thank you.
My talking points are in there. Oh, sorry. It's okay. I stole your stuff. Go ahead, start?
Yeah, feel free.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Stephanie Iker. I am Vice President and General Counsel for Cook Inlet Region, Inc. That is the parent company to Siri Land Development Company, which is the parent company to Grayling Land Development Company, the petitioner in this case before you. In addition to myself and Melissa Branch, we have a couple members of our real estate department also with us that have attended the various meetings with municipal staff in bringing this matter before you today. So, real briefly, to put this property in context, the property at issue is comprised of tracks A1, A2, and A3. It was platted in 2006 by Dora and Lester Clat, and at that time, it was zoned B3SL. Siri Land Development Company acquired tracks A2 and A3 in 2006 and transferred them to Grayling Land Development Company in 2009. In furtherance of a 40,000-square-foot office building construction, which is now known as the Doian Building, in 2010, the property underwent a re-subdivision plat, and the tracks were relabeled A2B and A3B, with A3B being divided into six fragment lots. In 2009, the intended use of the Grayling property was thought to be a mix of office and high-traffic retail. By high-traffic retail, I mean grocery, restaurant, and retail shopping, all involving regular public access to the property. In 2009, the municipality was similarly undergoing development planning efforts on its immediately adjacent parcel and intended to remove the traffic light at Timber Lane Drive, develop the sports park, and improve the private drive from Clat Road into the sports park so that it met municipal standards. In April in 2010, during the re-subdivision process, plat note 7 was added, and plat note 7 reads as follows: "As part of its future development, access between A2B and the South Anchorage Sports Park shall be resolved with the municipal traffic engineer." That's all plat note 7 says. This plat note was not added to comply with applicable code, nor was the connection concept fully developed. This plat note was added in reference to two items. One, the possibility that retail development on the Grayling parcel would benefit from a driveway to the sports park. And two, the possibility that a trail connection from the Grayling parcel to the sports park would benefit the Grayling site users. The intended beneficiaries are key to this discussion, as there are no public access easements on the plat, none. On April 27, 2010, Grayling and the municipality entered into a subdivision agreement for the completion of the site work. After completion of the first building, efforts to develop the site stalled due to change in the economic climate. Many projects in the community, including the sports park, were impacted at that time. However, Grayling met its obligations, and by November 2015, all site improvements called for in the subdivision agreement, including electrical, traffic control, cable, sidewalk, monumentation, landscaping, fencing, curb, gutter, telephone, streetlights, natural gas, with the exception of the street and drainage and walkway, were complete. While a trail connection does sound appealing in theory, this one, in fact, proves to be difficult to execute. What was initially contemplated in the 2010 subdivision agreement made no sense in 2016 to the municipality's staff nor Grayling, which is why the MOU on page 33 of your G1 staff packet dated July 2017 between the two parties was executed, and the subdivision agreement was closed out. The MOU states that "The purpose of this MOU is to memorialize the understanding between the parties regarding the removal of the walkway from the requirements of the existing subdivision agreement, as the parties do not support a walkway as described in 4.02A1C. Further development of the South Anchorage Sports Park and the subdivision will help determine an appropriate connection and location that would benefit both parties. As such, the parties agree that it is in the best interests of the parties to determine a trail location at a further date, upon which time developer will submit a suggested trail location to the municipality for approval. The developer will be responsible for completing the walkway in concert with the development of Tract A2B." That's what the MOU states. As you can see, the current development plan before you is for an assisted living and memory care facility. That is quite different than the use, the use intended a decade ago. Assisted living is not the same thing as independent senior living. Assisted living residents require help with daily living tasks, eating, bathing, moving about, medications. Memory care residents, those with dementia and Alzheimer's, require even more assistance with more restrictions placed on their movement about the facility. Residents generally do not leave the facility unless they are transported in a vehicle. This concept is reflected in the design of the facility. There's an abundance of private open space on-site to provide residents outside landscaped, lighted areas, which greatly exceed the code-required 15%. In preparation for this meeting, an effort to address the lingering plat note 7, multiple meetings occurred between the municipal staff and the stakeholders. Page 17 of your G1 staff packet includes a memo from Municipal Traffic Engineer Stephanie Marmillo, which states, "Based on discussions with the property owner, the Municipal Parks Department, and the Traffic Department in a meeting held on Thursday, January 10th, it has been determined that vehicular access is not desired by any party. As such, this serves as closure on the discussion of a need regarding vehicular connection between the subdivision and the South Anchorage Sports Park." This meeting is also memorialized on the letter found on page 115 of your G2 staff packet, or in the supplemental briefing that was handed out before the meeting, co-signed by Director of Parks and Recreation John Rada dated February 25th, and that states, "Neither Parks and Recreation nor Siri desire a trail connection. There's an issue of where the trail would connect, navigating a steep terrain, safety, liability, and long-term maintenance." Simply put, neither the Director of Parks and Recreation nor Grayling, the two affected parties in interest, want this trail. The users of A2B will not benefit from trail connectivity. Trail connectivity puts both Grayling users and the municipality at risk. The Director of Parks currently struggles with trespass issues from the sports park to the Grayling site and to the Clat property, it's immediately adjacent to the Grayling site. Adding a trail will intensify this problem. Grayling users, who could potentially use the trail, would be dumped onto the sports park's private drive. The private drive currently doesn't meet municipal standards. It doesn't have any sidewalks, and it's not lit after dark. It puts users directly into the path of vehicular traffic. Pedestrian access to the park is already currently available and accomplished by the installed sidewalks. The current sports park master plan doesn't require provisions for trail connections to adjacent properties. Plat note 7 has evolved to have a life of its own. Interpreting and reconciling the intent from 2010 to the feasibility of 2019 is nearly an impossible task. Grayling currently meets the code requirements for a private developer with, to provide public access to their development. No public easement was dedicated on the Grayling property for a public trail. Access from Grayling does not benefit its intended users. In fact, it puts its users and the municipality at risk. With the B3SL zoning designation, there's an opportunity to revisit this issue in the future, as development of A2B continues, but now is not the appropriate time. Grayling respectfully requests that the board remove condition 5 from the department recommendations on page 12 of the G1 packet, as well as department recommendation 3 on page 8 of the G2 staff packet. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for a petitioner?
Commissioner Strike? You had mentioned that the residents, the, that would be in this facility would not, if they left the facility, it would be by car. Did, are you speaking to the confines of the facility? Because they will still have walkways outside, is your intent?
Absolutely, but most of the residents that are in that facility suffer from serious memory care, such that the entire design of the facility is done in a concentric manner so that no resident ends up in a dead-ended hallway, for instance.
Quite familiar with it. So is your, is it your plan to have your total premises fenced or enclosed?
The plan is to have, within the facility, internal courtyards and open space, and so that doors to the exterior are monitored by alarm, but for an entire fence to go around the perimeter, no, that's not the intent. There's currently a fence that exists around the entire parcel.
But the idea here is not to intermingle the residents with the public?
No.
Because that would give them access to get off the premises, and this, that's the type of facility this is not. It's not a prison, but if...
It's not an open facility by any means. It's, it's to protect the residents from dangers of wandering away and getting lost. They are accompanied and monitored closely.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, actually, you coined it. You mentioned that this note 7 from the plat kind of has a life of its own.
Mm-hmm.
But, so how many employees do you expect to have at this facility?
It's a mix of employees, nursing staff, and rotating residents, so I don't, I don't recall at any one given time how many would be there. Do you happen to...
I have.
Are 130 beds?
107.
107 beds, and then the employee-to-staff ratio, or employee-to-resident ratio is defined by, you know, the standards for care, so I'm sorry, I don't have a number for that.
I guess really my point is, I guess, the, the value of a trail connection to the employees, you know, as far as who, I'm sure it's a stressful job, just to be able to get out in open space, and it'd be a shame to be in this cul-de-sac of a fenced-in lot. So I definitely see a value for connectivity to open space.
There's currently sidewalks. You can get to the sports parks simply by walking up the sidewalk, around the building, and down to the sports park.
I mean, you were talking going down to Clat, south to Clat?
So perhaps we have a diagram, but yes, there's, Clat is right there. It's...
Show us on the map.
Yes.
It's off the map, it's...
So we're here, sidewalks are here, so yes, we would go south to...
Yeah, it's quite a ways down to, to the, yep.
Because that's the, you know, there's the, we've got quite an elevation difference along this edge.
Can you move towards the mic so we can, no, towards the mic so we can get it on the record?
Yes.
So, so yes, the sidewalk would go south through Tract A3B to Clat, and then around to the park through the sidewalk system there.
Yeah, I guess my point is, there's a value to the employees and staff, and sometimes the, the other connectivity options are, what do you say, at least 500 or 600 feet away in that range.
Respectfully, there, there could be a value to the employees and staff, but the risks I would offer outweigh the benefit. What you have here is an 18-foot difference, an 18-foot difference between the Grayling plaque, tract, and the MOA tract, the Parks and Recs tract. So you'd have to overcome that anyway by multiple switchbacks just to meet the grade differentiation. Once you get to the MOA tract, I don't know if any of you have had a chance to visit there lately, but there's, I live three blocks away. I'm there a lot. There's a dog park, there's baseball fields, and there's a small children's playground with brand-new great playground equipment, which is why I'm there frequently. There are no trail connections. There's a dog park, there's baseball fields, and there's a small children's playground with brand-new great playground equipment, which is why I'm there frequently. There are no trail connections, there's no paths through the woods, there's no walking recreation-type place where you're focusing the public. I think some of that was originally designed, as I mentioned, in the 20, or the 2009 master plan for the sports park redevelopment, which is why improving that road was also included at that time. But neither of those have come to fruition, and I, again, the economic downturn right around that time stalled a bunch of projects out, which is what caused a complete pause and redevelopment of this site.
Commissioner Strick?
You said there's no trail connection, but this land is being developed, and the way it was originally platted and zoned, as it was turned over to the city, was designed to ultimately create interconnecting links of the trail.
Yes.
But now you're saying, let's void that and not include your lot. I'm not saying that that trail is not designed for your residents, probably it's not a good thing for your residents. But the intent of that property all along was to create an interlinking mode of transportation, walking pathways between these different segments of the property.
Right. So you're correct in that the design for the trails in the park was to allow access, but the way that access is actually facilitated is through the sidewalks. If you get to our property, you're dumped out into the middle of nowhere, there's no connectivity through, and so that's why there's no public easement. There's no dedication of a public easement to our site, there's no dedication of a public easement to the Klat site right adjacent to ours, and there's no dedication to the easement to the adjacent parcel on the other side.
There's no dedication because when it was platted, and the footnotes are, it will be worked out, because this property, when it was turned over from the Klat family to the city, wasn't platted. So there was no identifying where the easements would be and how this property would ultimately be segmented out.
Well, it was, because we did a re-subdivision plat. If I could show you, do you mind?
Sure.
I'm gonna grab this. This is the site we're talking about right now. This is where we did the Frag Lot re-subdivision. At that time, this roundabout was put in. Underneath here is the connection to the sidewalk, which allows access for this entire neighborhood. The entire neighborhood can go through here underneath the roundabout, connect to the sidewalk, walk right through here, and get down to the South Anchorage Sports Park. There's no ability, and the reason why is because the gradient change between the roadway and our site, there's no ability to add trails, so there's no public easement ever platted. We're talking about a private development, private property. There's no public access trail.
That was purchased with the notation?
No.
That it would be worked out to have a, as you pointed out earlier, that it would be vague, but it was still that there would be a trail connectivity.
For the benefit of the Grayling users. There's no, so when I say when there's no public easement...
And it says that in the footnote?
So people would be trespassing.
Does it say that in the footnote, "For the benefit of the Grayling user"?
That's, well, that's the intent of a private development, is for the benefit of the users.
Does the clause state that it's for the intent of the Grayling user?
Plat note seven is silent as to who the intent of the user is. What I'm saying is that a private landowner has the ability to post no trespassing signs and keep the public off of its property, which would be something that we would have to consider with all of the trespass that's currently going on right now from the South Anchorage Sports Complex.
So your argument is, because there was no dedicated easement, that for the private landowner should be precluded from any other, should be precluded from that clause?
It's private property, is what I'm trying to convey, and perhaps I'm not doing a...
Private property purchased with that clause in place.
No, so the plat note seven didn't exist prior to the re-subdivision plat.
So who put the clause in?
The parties did, when we re-subdivided the property.
So somebody agreed to the clauses in order to get the consent for the subdivision, somebody agreed to the clauses to be placed in there. Was it just inadvertently, no one thought about the impact? I know we talked about the economy changed and so forth, and what it was intended for, but we're here where we are today.
So at that time, in 2009 and 2010, that whole area was going under redesign and redevelop. The roundabouts were going in, the South Anchorage Sports Park had designs for upgrade, our site had potential for multiple users, there's a lot of activity going on. So it was thought at that time that there could be benefit from having connectivity. Grocery, retail shopping, those types of high uses, it would make sense, or it could make sense, based on what the South Anchorage Sports Park was supposed to be developed out to be. It could make sense to have a public-use trail. What I'm saying is, right now, as it stands today, the South Anchorage Sports Park, as designed or intended back in 2009 and 10, did not come to fruition. Our high-public-access-density-retail-type-shopping-development did not come to fruition. What we have right now is a development that is intended to take up nearly the whole site for assisted-living-memory-care residents.
Has the Bay Shore-Klat Community Council weighed in on this at all?
The meeting agenda was posted for their comment and review.
So we did actually attend both Bay Shore-Klat and then the Ocean View, the other, we both attended both community councils. The question came up, and they asked about it, but there was no, there was no resolution for or against, I mean, the trail, the question was asked at both meetings, if there would be, and it was something that we were looking at early on, you know, when we met months ago about it, so...
I'm not sure what you just said.
But they asked, they asked about it, that was at both community councils, but nobody...
They asked, not answered, and just fell on, nothing derived, they gave no comments?
No, there was no comments that I had seen or no opinions about it, no.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a clarification, I believe our staff packet says no comments were received. Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, there's one more note. During your introduction, you talked about the Municipal Traffic Engineer, of course, in our packet, I think page 17, she goes on, she talks about how essentially the closure, as far as the connectivity of her vehicle access, you mentioned that, but the next paragraph, which you did not include, was how she goes on to say that she feels there's a great value, that's using her words, in a non-motorized connection between the proposed property and the sports park. And she goes on to say that there's, on two other occasions, an agreement was written between the property owners and the city to construct this trail, and both those times it was not done. And she says it's time to get it done.
Would you, I'm sorry, you'd like me to comment on that?
Not a question, I guess it's the point, you quoted her information in the first paragraph, and you didn't go on to say that she sees a great value in this trail.
Well, what she said is that with the property owner and internal municipality, it's multiple meetings with that, it was determined that there was great value. And in our opinion, it was not determined by all parties that there is great value, which is why I'm here today, to say that we, the property owner, and the Director of Parks and Rec, who's the immediately adjacent person responsible for supervising, neither of these two parties think it's a great idea. Neither of these two parties want the trail right now. So with respect to Stephanie's comments, I found, you know, I respectfully disagree with the second part of her assertion, and I just want to say that Grayling Land Development Company and Siri Land Development Company has been developing property in this community for a long time. We have a long history of doing so with thoughtful connections to the rest of the community, and we currently own many properties. And so when we originally put the plat note in, or agreed to the subdivision agreement, we thought that this is something that we could work with through the design and evolve. When it became time to close out the subdivision agreement, no one knew how to deal with this trail, because it just didn't make sense years later. And so when you say there's been two prior, two subsequent agreements, that's been continued good-faith effort on behalf of Grayling to figure out what to do with this. There's nobody on the property right now, it didn't make sense to put a trail in. Parks and Rec had no plan on how to deal with all the pedestrians that may or may not get dumped off onto the road with no sidewalks. They also didn't have an idea of how to keep public trespass off of the Grayling property. So it's been a two-sided conversation this entire time of how do we move forward with completing the subdivision requirements? How do we keep the public access safe and where it goes? How do we allow time to figure out what the eventual use, not the intended use? The intended use is what drove plat note seven, but the actual use, a decade later? How do we reconcile that with the thought that went behind the intent to have plat note seven with the trail connection with the realities of today? The realities of today is that these are assisted-living-memory-care residents. The realities of today is that the private drive into the sports park never got upgraded. There's an 18-foot difference in grade. These are a lot of, they're not insurmountable, but they are a lot of substantial details to overcome when you're talking about site, flow, traffic, safety, lighting. That private drive that goes into the sports complex, that's currently locked every single night and unlocked every single morning, because they have such a difficult time with trespass. I mean, that's the type of connection we're talking about.
Commissioner Gardner?
Hi. A few questions. I think one thing I wanted to do was to clarify at kind of the beginning. Early on, you mentioned a concern about the specific language and making sure it was the line between the two cases, and obviously you have a concern about the path that we're discussing here. Were there any other conditions of approval in either of the two cases that you had concerns about?
No, the, no, I believe that staff and our consultants have resolved all other issues. The trail connection is the only one.
Okay. And then also, I wanted to make sure I understood the timeline for the history that you had laid out, and I'm sure you probably said it and I missed it, but when was the focus changed from the initial plans for the property, the subdivision, to including an assisted living facility?
The assisted living project only came about in the last year and a half, two years. There has been very little interest right now in the site for the last decade after the change in the economy.
And so what was the status of the subdivision and of the sports park in, I guess, July of 2016, when this memorandum of understanding was signed?
In July 2016, we hadn't yet been introduced to Maple Springs, who's our partner in developing the assisted living facility. So we didn't have an intended user for the site, and we were simply trying to get the subdivision agreement closed out so we could have our perfect performance, payment performance bond released. It was cleaning up housekeeping items, if you will, from the prior development efforts back in 2009 and 10. That's how long this had kind of been lingering. I think from a development perspective, we were hoping that we could continue to roll projects in and continue to work on the subdivision agreement and have the entire development completed by now, but that simply just didn't happen.
Thanks. And then on the memorandum of understanding, the language that you read about the parties not supporting the walkway as described in section 4.02A1C, what is that section referring to?
4.02A1C refers to the, hold on one moment, right here. A walkway from the adjoining concrete sidewalk at the north end of the tract A3B and on the west end of the backbone oriented northwest-south, and then it goes into the details. I can continue to read the whole paragraph, but it comes from the baseball...
Sorry, what paragraph, what are you reading from?
I'm reading from the baseball subdivision file number 10-004, CC number, the subdivision agreement.
Is that in the packet? Page 22. Because it's in the back of our packet. Is that in our packet, or?
Hold on one moment, I think it's in the back of your packet.
It's, the subdivision agreement starts on page 148 of the G2 packet. So I'm trying to find the right section for you, but it is in there.
My apologies, my subdivision agreements from my files references a different section number, but it is...
That's fine. If maybe one of you, when you find it, could let us know, I'm just curious to see what that language is. And then the other thing I was just curious about, is you mentioned a couple times trespass concerns and safety concerns, and I was wondering if you could elaborate on what, you know, how that, what that is, what that looks like currently.
Sure, sure, and my apologies, we also invited the adjacent landowner, Paul Klat, to be here tonight. He was here at our prior meeting, but I don't see him in the audience tonight. So what we currently face right now is a lot of trespass from dog walkers and site users, whether or not it's pedestrian access, bike access, from the sports park over and across up the hill and then to our property. And so we've had a lot of theft, we've had vandalism, we've had, like I said, some dumping. Some of that was alleviated when we took down, there was a small structure that was used kind of as a golf shack, because the Klat's had operated a little driving range there at that site for a while. But it's, despite having, what we have right now is a private drive that goes down here, and despite having Jersey barricades at the top of this, there's people that access the site frequently through the sports park like this, and then there's people that jump the Jersey barricades and just ruin our landscaping, for lack of a better term, right now.
And so do you know that people are doing it from the sports park, or how do you...
Yes, there are people that definitely do it from the sports park. It's a trespass issue that we've talked about with the Department of Parks and Recs right there, and that's part of the reason why they, as I mentioned, they gate the property every night, they lock it up, and a municipal employee comes and unlocks it every morning to try and help control the pedestrian, just the public.
Thanks.
Commissioner Spinelli?
You mentioned trespass several times in the private property thing. If you were made to build this trail, do you know, would you have the ability to close it off from the park with fence?
So to have a gate, maybe a one-sided...
Be a gate, maybe just a fence, I don't, I guess that would be up to you, I'm asking you.
Yeah, you know, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't spoke to anyone about fencing the trail. The entire property is fenced right now, and it still suffers from trespass.
Okay.
So trespass on private property is a substantial problem.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Strick?
And I think this question's more directed at staff, with the intent of this, we can't use the word easement, because it's not dedicated, it's not assigned. We've got an eight-foot identified pathway, travelway, that the petitioner's claiming is, my words, being used, a pathway is now being used either to or through their property now from the ballpark, from which we have a memorandum of agreement that says they don't need the pathway. The party here is saying they don't need the pathway. What was the city's intent when you put the clause in here as a stipulation? The enforceability of that clause, was it your intent that that would have the enforcement of an easement that would be dedicated for public right-of-way?
And there was a requirement to place a, or to build a pedestrian connection to the sports park then. There were two agreements, it was in the subdivision agreement. Here's the designed trail right here. The agreement was to put it off until the development of this tract, and that's why it's come back.
Does, does that trail that you identified there basically goes from the sports park to, I believe, C Street?
Mm-hmm.
Correct? Does it, is it necessary to go through this particular tract of land, or is there access from C Street through a pedestrian right, pedestrian walkway right-of-way, sorry, I don't want to get into the legalese, pathway to the sports park area? Because that was the intent for this development on this, on these properties and the replating, subject to some agreement being made to create a pathway that the petitioner wants to put a, I'm putting words in your mouth, a gate up and have control because it's private property and they view it as trespassing? Or is this a right-of-way that will be agreed upon as a result of the agreement to having the replat done in the first place, saying, we'll work it out, gentleman's agreement, we'll work it out later? But now we're having the petitioner saying, well, it doesn't suit us, we really don't want it, and oh, by the way, here's a memorandum of agreement, the sports park doesn't want it either. So no one wants it, so let's get rid of it. Is that a paraphrase?
Ish.
Ish. Okay. I like, I, I, there's areas like the-
May I?
There's areas like the medical park over at the university level, that it's got right-of-ways that come through their properties that are either bicycle right-of-ways, pedestrian, that are used by the public to access through and to other areas rather than using the road and the street, rather than going through the roundabouts. So there's a safety issue here with the amount of folks here and how they get from point A to point B. Now, and I'm, I'm not getting on a soapbox here, but this property, I believe, was owned at one point by the, the Clatt family, got turned over to the municipality. The municipality traded that land to the Clatt family for some land on the lower hillside. Did this go into the Heritage Land Bank?
I don't know.
I read the report on the rezone back in 97, which required the special limitation to have this public hearing site plan review, and I believe it was to work through issues like this. They rezoned the property from RO to B3SL with a requirement to come before you to resolve issues like this because it was intended for residential or office. They rezoned it to B3, general commercial, with this requirement to come before the commission to have a public hearing site plan review, to look at community-wide benefits like a trail connection to the municipal-owned land on the other side of the property boundary.
That I don't, you know, I'm sorry, what was that?
Where'd you buy the property from?
Dora and Lester Clatt.
Pardon me?
Dora and Lester Clatt.
So this was not part of their parcel that they had given to the city in exchange for other property?
I, I can't speak to that, but this-
Not, not, you bought it direct, it wasn't?
No, we got it from Dora and Lester Clatt.
Okay. And at the time, it was zoned, or?
No, I think it was zoned B3SL when we purchased it.
So the zoning on this parcel has never changed?
Not since we've owned it.
May I? So in my conversations with municipal staff, as we've developed and come before you with the trail and, and right before the case, we had, right before the, the case packet and before we were prepping for hearing last month, I actually asked the question of planning staff, of Michelle McNulty and Stephanie Moremillo were in the room, and asked the question of whether the trail was intended to be for the Grayling development users or whether it would be a public trail, because I'd asked the question about an easement being dedicated. And in those discussions, they had indicated that it wasn't to have public access, that public had access through, you know, the underpass and through the sidewalks along Clatt, that it truly was meant to be for these parcels' users. So that was the, because it was the question we had about whether it was going to be a public trail and was going to be an easement, and how that would work since the existing roadway that was built under a subdivision agreement is not an easement, like how that would work? And they said that it would, it was for the private users. So that was the conversation we had because I was asking those questions as well.
I'm not going to disagree with you, but intuitive as we move forward here today, part of that doesn't make sense to me. Not if you're trying to adjoin two parcels of land, one is a community ballpark area with a lot of activity through pedestrian, walking, bicycles, et cetera, going from point A through a segment into point B. So that tells me it's more public use than it is stolen.
No one's going through our property to anywhere. Grayling property is a dead end. They go through the sports park to recreate on our parcel.
But earlier you said they're coming from the sports park, trespassing onto your property-
Walking their dog and then going back to the sports park where they've parked their car, or going back to the sports park or somewhere else. There's nothing else, that's what I was saying, the gradient on this, there's nothing else beyond our property. If I could clarify one point-
So they can't access C Street through your property now?
They cannot. It's completely fenced in by an 18-foot tall fence. There is zero access to C Street. The way that people have to ingress and egress from the sports park is the sidewalk. So if our users of Grayling wanted to go to the sports park, there's a sidewalk that goes all the way up, all the way around, all the way down. They cross no streets, no street crossing whatsoever. If people want to get to C Street, they can go and they trespass and they recreate, they still have to go up this private drive. This is entirely fenced in. This is all Paul Clatt's property. This is entirely fenced in, eight-foot tall fence. You cannot access it whatsoever. There's an underpass right here, that's perhaps where you and I were miscommunicating. There's an underpass underneath C Street where people from this neighborhood go under the underpass, it still dumps them out all the way up here, right by the roundabout, and they have to go up along the sidewalk right here to get back down.
So back to the staff, what your intent was?
To provide, provide access between the two parcels. My understanding was that there was, was going to be a public access between the two. The way the condition is worded is that there would, they would be required to build connection, you know, to the property line from, from the site, they'd have to work it into their site plan. That would allow the public to come to this site and for people within this site, which is still not fully developed, to go the other direction as well.
Are you comfortable with the land use change that they're now promoting for the particular development that they want to put on this property? Are you, is the staff comfortable with getting rid of that clause now at this stage? Your opinion?
No, I, the department strenuously recommends that the condition number five be required as written.
And what we're asking is to remove the condition just for purposes of this plat. If it makes sense later and the site use changes, we have to, because of our B3SL designation, come back to the planning commission every single time we develop the plat or the fraglot. So if the, if the use changes later and we have a bunch of activity or we develop retail on that site, we can revisit the trail connection at that time.
Well, we can solve that tonight. We don't have all the back and forth. I mean, we can either, either look at it that the, we're going to uphold this piece or to, well, we can, on that approach. But why is staff, are you, are you looking to the property to the north as the means to want to continue with that connectivity requirement?
There's another tract to the north. Only half of this tract is, but, so one of these fragment lots is, is shown in the site plan. There are two other fragment lots. And one of the conditions of approval in Sean's case is for them to show the connection all the way through. That is to extend, take the drawing that they're showing you now and to extend the road and sidewalk north to the property.
So we could approve the-
That's for the sidewalk, though.
We can approve this plat tonight. We could waive number five, but stipulate that the plat to the north, when replatted, will have connectivity and take out the ambiguity.
So-
As a condition of approving this plat.
I, I'm not sure if we're confusing different issues.
Yeah.
So, you know, this, the condition of approval that, that Ms. Iker and I've been speaking to is about connection from, you know, Grayling's property to the sports park. There's a separate condition of approval about the road being shown on the commercial fragment lot site plan and on this major site plan, further connecting to those other fragment lots and, and the road carrying forward to the north. That's a, kind of a different issue. I don't think we have any disagreement on, on that issue. You know, just trying to be neutral on this, Ms. Iker said that, that if, that with each develop, the development of each fragment lot, they'll be required to bring a, a site plan before the commission, just as they are today. And that's true, but, you know, this fragment lot, should it be developed the way that they've shown it, it, it seems to close the door on the ability to connect, have a trail connection across it because it'll be owned by a different property owner at that point, and you won't be able to go and change their site later. It's quite a large building, takes up most of the site, they're showing a fire lane around it, there's really not a lot of other space to, to do a trail connection. And will Grayling retain ownership of, of this, or will it be the, the assisted living facility?
It'll be, the property will be transferred into a joint venture with us and the assisted living facility.
We've had the same issue with the, with trailheads up here on the hillside, getting from the trailheads going through property to get access to the park. But the, the, in my opinion, the petitioner makes a strong argument as to why this walkway, this trail does not make sense, assuming the fact that they're going to build this particular development on this property. And for that, in my belief, there is a hazard to the residents and so forth there, that, you know, you don't want them having access and the in and out and so forth. But I'm not sure, you know, as long as they're building that, hold them, hold their feet to the fire, but access from C Street over to the ballpark, I believe, is still a viable need, whether it's through this particular track where it is or move it further north along the other track or whatever, I don't know. I'm not the engineer.
If I can, on Grayling Land Development LLC doesn't own the tract to the north, that's still held by the Clatt family. So the Clatt family still owns that tract, and whereas theoretically, maybe one day the commission would, there would be the ability to make a connection from that property, we don't have that before us now. This, this fragment lot with the development that you see, it, it stretches the full length of this tract, A2B, and it does not show a, you know, a trail connection across it for the benefit of the other fragment lots that aren't this assisted living facility. Not all of the assisted living facility is, is memory care. The, in, in meetings that we've had with them, they said that, you know, maybe it's half of the building is, is memory care. I don't know that, that a, a trail connection creates a safety risk to the, to the residents that doesn't seem to-
If the residents have access to the trail area through their facility, it creates a hazard to them. All the assisted living memory care centers, and I've toured dozens and dozens of them, all enclosed, and they do the inner enclosure, they do the locked doors, just as she said. It is a concerted plan. And, and I mean, a lot of efforts go into that to protect the residents from being able to go out into the general public. Cars that come in do not have access to the areas where they're walking and commune and go out and walk on nature trails and ponds, et cetera. So I applaud you. I mean, that's, that's the standard out there for those type of facilities.
Thank you.
My question is directed to staff, but I may ask the petitioner to chime in as well. I'm actually having a hard time looking at this, what appears to be a very large discrepancy in the traffic engineering comments. It first says that in a meeting held on January 10th, it was determined vehicular access is not desired by any party, and as such, this, this serves as closure of discussion regarding vehicular connection between the subdivision. And then it mentions that there is great value and that it was found by parties, but one of the parties is here, and they say that they don't see value, the other party is the park, and they're also saying they don't see value. So who are these parties if it's not the petitioner and it's not the park that's getting this value? Because it's not referenced in the traffic and engineering report, and it's not refer, and it's, the contradiction of that is what's mentioned in other places.
So at one point, there was thinking that there would be a vehicular connection between the, the park and the, this property that's the subject of the site plan review, and that's where the traffic engineer has drawn a hard line, that there should not be a vehicular connection between the end of the park, like around the dog park area, connecting to Grayling Land Development's property. I think that that's the issue that she's trying to say, there shall be no more discussion of a vehicular access between the two. But then she goes on, the traffic engineer goes on to support the, a pedestrian connection between the two properties. It is true that John Rada, the park director, has signed a, a letter, it's, you know, strongly, you know, opposing the, the trail connection. You know, I met with the acting Parks and Rec director, Josh Durand, and he said they very much support a trail connection between this property and the park. However, they're concerned about having to come up with the money to make improvements, to make a, a connecting trail to Grayling's trail at this time, because they don't have the, the funding for it. They're fundraising for some other projects right now. Tom Karosi, park planner, states Parks and Rec supports features for pedestrian connectivity, including a pedestrian connection to the park. However, the department does not have funds at this time to facilitate from the MOA side.
And just as a clarification, is, does a pathway have to connect to C Street, or does it just have to connect to the petitioner's site?
It's just from the, this property to the park.
Okay. And then also, as a clarification, the park is currently locking the gates at a specific time, and if there was a connection, is there a plan in place on how they're going to lock off the park access?
Well, my understanding is that all of the parking lots that are maintained by the Parks and Rec Department are locked by gate every night at a certain time, somebody goes around and closes all of the parks.
But this wouldn't be a vehicular access, and it wouldn't be from the parking lot, it'd be from the petitioner's site?
Yeah, that would have to be worked out. I think that there's some flexibility in the condition of approval to deal with that.
And then I have a question for petitioner. Can you, I'm having a hard time visualizing, you mentioned this 18-foot gradient. Where, I think, yeah, on that one, if you could show me where the 18-foot gradient, that sloping occurs, would be helpful for me.
The entire length of the property from, from the top part right here, this is Paul Clatt's property, all the way down to, all the way down here. There's no, the elevation change is 18 feet, as I mentioned. There's no ability to easily walk. If you were to have a trail, even the preliminary designs that we discussed before, it's at least one, if not two, switchbacks. And that was part of the reason why Mr. Colehase of the Municipalities Anchorage, who signed the MOU, signed the MOU. The trail just didn't make sense. And so the gradient is the entire length of the property. This whole drive is sunk down. And so I don't know what the parks plan is for lighting, sidewalks, what they need as far as expanding and upgrading that road, but it's substantial. And the entire, if I can just clarify one point, the entire point of the trail is literally to connect this parcel to this parcel. It's not to go to C Street. There's no public easement, there's no public access. This is a private development.
Your own president, your president signed-
Just a second. I have no further questions right now, I may have more later. Is there, is there anyone else in the queue?
Yeah.
Commissioner Strike?
So I'm trying to reconcile the March 11th, 2010 letter.
Could you tell me which page in the staff packet you're on?
163.
Of G2?
I believe so, yes.
Just one moment.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Where the president of your company-
Is there, is there anyone else in the queue?
Yeah.
Commissioner Strick?
So I'm trying to reconcile the March 11th, 2010 letter.
Could you tell me which page in the staff packet you're on?
163.
Of G2?
I believe so, yes.
Just one moment.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Where the president of your company acknowledges and accepts the change, and actually there's a diagram that shows the switchback. He identifies it's not just a short little, it extends 190 feet west, parallel.
Mm-hmm. So in 2010, again, this whole site was supposed to be developed for retail, shopping, grocery, high pedestrian access. This letter memorializes a plan for a trail that could benefit Grayling site users with high mobility, to a sports park that was supposed to look much different than it does today. There was plans to get rid of the streetlight, there was plans to upgrade the private drive, there was plans to do all sorts of things on the South Anchorage Sports Park. So this 2010 letter that you're looking at was based on some of the best intentions that were derived from the ambiguous plat note seven.
Yeah, but this letter that was signed by your president and agreed to is a little bit more than just a few inches on your sheet here, that you were identifying, it's just connecting these two pieces, and you hold up your finger and you did this. It goes 190 feet west, it goes 550 feet. This is quite an elaborate pathway.
And it is. May I also clarify too, that what you're looking at and where you're looking at is at the very end of Doian's part, the Doian office building, and is actually on the track to the south and not this one. It's on track, this sketch is on A3B. It's on the one below. It is substantial.
So it was never put in there either?
It was at a completely different.
So the path was never done there, it's not, you don't want to do it here.
This is the same, this is the discussion with the delay in 2016, but this is, this sketch.
So you got to waive it once before, not to do the pathway once before on the Doian building?
Well, it was the closeout of the subdivision agreement in 2015, which is the MOU.
I'm trying to reconcile with where you're at today, where the city, the staff are, reconciling what you're trying to accomplish, reconciling what has happened, and how we've gotten to here, and it's, we continue to push the ball down the road until finally there's, we've gone all the way north on the property and there's no pathway at all.
Well, if I could take a step back, in 2009 and 2010, there was a lot of planning efforts going on in this area. There was us, there was the road upgrades, the roundabouts, then this South Anchorage Sports Park. There's no code requirement for a trail, and that's probably what's so hard about this hearing, is I can't point to a code and tell you why I am or am not able to comply. This whole discussion derived out of a plat note. And even in the plat note, we didn't know what the trail would look like, we didn't know how it would be designed, it was an idea. An idea based on what we had hoped the development would come to fruition. So what we've done, if I can just finish, is in 2009, we got the property plotted, in 2010, we continued the site design, we built the Doian building. The rest of the site didn't come to fruition, but we had the subdivision agreement hanging out there, and we had commitments to finishing the subdivision agreement. So even though there's no, there's no development beyond the Doian building, we completed lights, we completed road, we completed sewer, we did all of the things necessary to close out the subdivision agreement, but the trail still didn't make sense. So that's why we asked, and it was continuous communications, it was a two-party agreement. What you're holding right there is a 2000 letter acknowledging, hey, this sounds like a great idea. What you have in the MOU is both parties, parks and Grayling, saying we don't know how to actually do this.
I disagree. What I'm holding here is the president of your company capitulating to an agreement to accepting the comments for something. He receives, your company receives something in return for accepting this comment.
Well.
They didn't just agree with it out of thin air and say, hey, just.
In order to get our site plan review, absolutely, as I am before you now, so.
Something approved by accepting this agreement, and he specifically went on your letterhead and wrote the letter, saying, we will accept this comment now, because we got something else in return.
We got the ability to build our building.
You got the ability to build your building.
For a trail connection that should benefit our users, Grayling users, it's a private property, there's no public access. In 2010.
He didn't say that here, he didn't say that, did he?
Well, it is said that, it's said that in the absence of a plat note for an easement.
I'm just looking at the letter from your president.
Right. But you have to look at the development in entirety, and the plating in entirety, and the subdivision agreement in entirety, and the MOU in entirety. It's not a small snippet of time.
And the consideration and what was given up in order to receive the ability to build your building.
Respectfully, I disagree. It was an exercise of a right to develop a private parcel. It was an exercise of a right to develop a private parcel to construct an office building. And while there was the best of intentions back a decade ago about connections and uses, I mean, that property has sat vacant for this whole time. Think about it. If we had had the ability to put retail, grocery, office, mixed use, we would have done it. The trail would have made sense. Now, the intended users, assisted living, memory care, and if we can get that momentum, then that's exactly, I mean, that development is going to occur. The plan is before you. This is B3 SL zoned. We have to come before you every time we want to develop our property for review. We're exercising our right to develop our property.
Commissioner Gardner?
A few quick follow-up questions for staff. Earlier when you were referencing or discussing the view of the Parks Department, I just wanted to make sure I understand what it was you had said. I thought I heard you say that the Parks Department's primary, perhaps only concern with the path was the cost associated with it, was that right?
That's what the acting Parks and Rec director, Josh Durand, you know, expressed to the planning department.
And were you reading from a letter?
Yeah, I received an email, comments from a park planner stating that they, you know, echoing what the, the email came first from Tom Karosi, park planner, saying, yes, we want the trail, but we don't have the funds to make a matching trail. And that sort of flew in the face of the letter signed by John Rada, Parks and Rec director. So we had a meeting with Josh Durand. At that meeting, he said, yeah, we want the trail, we just don't have the funds at this time.
Do we have a copy of that letter? Is that in the packet or that email?
I can hand out the email, sure.
Yeah, I'm just curious. And so, and so on page 115 of the packet for case G2, the letter to John Rada, I'll wait until. On page 115 of the packet for G2, in the end of the third paragraph where it says, "In our discussion with you on January 10th, neither Parks and Rec nor Siri desire a trail connection. There are issues of where the trail will connect, navigating steep terrain, safety liability, and long-term maintenance." And so am I to understand correctly that those issues, other than perhaps the long-term maintenance and the costs associated with that, are not issues that the Parks Department is concerned with?
Well, I suspect that, I mean, the letter was drafted by the petitioner, not by the Parks and Rec director. There is a topography change. I think that the topography change will be greater with the construction of this building, they'll have to do some grading. It's a very large, long building, and so there'll be a lot of earthwork done.
Yeah, and not to say that those aren't issues, but as far as reasons why Parks and Rec, as identified in this letter, doesn't desire a trail connection, those aren't, those aren't reasons why Parks wouldn't desire a trail connection, on your understanding?
Correct. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
I do not see anyone else in the queue. Is there any other questions for petitioner or staff? If not, I'll probably take a quick break and then open it up for public comments. Seeing no one else, yeah, we'll take a quick break, about five minutes, and then we'll open up for public comments. All right, I think we're all back, so I'll call this meeting back into session. And now we are open for public comments. Is there anyone from the public wishing to make a comment on this matter?
Or him out.
Seeing no members of the public wishing to speak, there are eight minutes and 50 seconds remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you all again for being here tonight. I myself serve on a board, and I know that these evenings can get long, and so I do appreciate your time. I think the thing that would be most helpful to reiterate is that Siri Land Development Company has been in this community for many years. We have many projects that we have developed, that we work on. We have 2525 C Street, we have 725 East Fireweed Lane, we have the Tecot New Center, we have a lot of undeveloped parcels yet to come. The point is, is that we're in this community, we approach each development very thoughtfully, we reach out, we're involved in the community, and we always try and make appropriate decisions for the development and the sustainability of the projects. In 2010, the landscape of this project was very different. And what we have right now in 2019 is that different landowners are being held to different standards. A private landowner in 2009 and 10, who understands that the sports park is going to look much differently than it does now, and agrees to put a trail connecting the sports park for the benefit of its users for retail shopping, high public access, is not what we have right now in 2019. Timber Lane Drive light never went away. The road was never upgraded. There are no sidewalks in this South Anchorage Sports Park. There is no lighting after dark. There also is no retail shopping. There's no grocery, there's no high office use. The Grayling site is going to have an assisted living facility. Its intended users, the sole beneficiaries of this project, are not going to benefit from a trail connection. If a trail connection makes sense later, it can be added on the A2B site. What you have before you right now is a request for a plan for A3B. Plat note seven applies to A2B and A3B. And as one of your student members pointed out, the trail connection that's referenced in the 2010 letter is meant to go on A2B. Every time a frag lot on A2B gets developed, plat note seven could come up. But right now, we're talking about A3B. We're talking about an assisted living parcel. Putting a trail now doesn't make sense. And with respect to the municipality and all of the efforts that they've gone through to communicate, we've received several mixed messages from internal staff looking at this project in a variety of ways, which is the same throughout the history of the project. What's important to know is that Siri Land Development Company, through its wholly owned subsidiary, Grayling Land Development, is a thoughtful developer. We try and right-size the projects, do so in a sustainable manner, we're community-minded, and we're not going anywhere. We'll be back, we still own all of the other parcels. But right now, the development that we planned in 2009 and 10 didn't come to fruition, and the sports park, as designed in 2009, did not come to fruition. We have a mismatch on both ends. To hold Grayling Land Development Company to a higher standard and put in a trail when it doesn't make sense, when the sports park has not also been developed, would be very unfair. We're trying to exercise the right to develop our land, we have complied with all of the code requirements, and we respectfully request that you remove the two conditions relating to the trail connectivity for this site plan review. Thank you for your time.
Questions?
Commissioner Strick?
Thank you for the clarification too, that helps on A2B versus A3B. We are dealing with A3B here, not A2B.
Correct.
There is reference.
No, that's, that's.
Oh, sorry, did I get A2 and A3? My apologies, Francis.
First?
Yes.
So we are dealing A2B?
Yes.
We're dealing with A2B.
Yes.
The trail, everything else I said was correct, except for the numbers.
Yes.
So the trail that you saw, that you held up?
Darn, because I want to point back on page 118, the clause that said on the plat, when it was, I believe it was a short plat summary of action, and looking for clarification, because the intent, "Future development of tract A2B shall provide a connecting roadway with non-motorized facilities from the South Anchorage Sports Park access road to the two-lane access road starting at C Street and Peninsula intersection."
You said 118 of G2?
118.
Or are you on G1?
The second, the second piece, the only one that's got 100 pages in it.
So, so the roadway part, that is one of the conditions that we're not protesting, is actually going to connect the roadway work that's been done on A3B through A2B to Peninsula through Clapp's property, through an easement that we have, that they have between the two parcels. So there will be that, the vehicular connection.
Well, that's vehicular, this is for non-motorized.
Well, it will have sidewalks on it, the existing section does have sidewalks on it, and we have to continue in the same manner. So it's a vehicular roadway with sidewalks on both sides that's been developed on A3B, and will continue through A2B up through Clapp's property through an easement to connect to Peninsula.
Yeah, this relates to the two-lane access road, that provision does.
Not to the non-motorized?
No, I mean, that roadway will have sidewalks on it, so I mean, it's non-motor, I mean, pedestrian facilities with the vehicular roadway.
That particular provision isn't speaking to the trail, but thank you so much for trying to help.
I was just curious, have either of you managed to find that section in the MOU that I was curious about earlier?
I believe, no, and I believe, because that's the language that was in it that was removed with the MOU. So that, that language that was in that, the existing subdivision agreement, then that language was removed because of the MOU was put in place. So I think that's why the discrepancy.
Okay. Oh, and then just one other question too about the MOU. Thanks for clarifying that point. At that time in 2016, for the MOU, I know you hadn't yet been introduced to Maple Springs or considered this type of facility. What, if anything, was in mind at that point in time, or was it just in a holding pattern you didn't know, or what was the, what was the status?
Honestly, for this tract, we had no interest whatsoever. We had an initial, we had a, one of the small frag lots on the already developed parcel under contract for maybe about three months, while some parties did due diligence, but again, with the economy, that fell through. So at this point, that's why we made the decision to go ahead and close out the subdivision agreement, because we could have left it open, and we could have amended it to include other development, but we had a payment performance bond we were paying on every year, and it was lingering paperwork and having to go back. I mean, when you have a subdivision agreement open, you have to continue to do status reports and updates, and that's part of why your packet is so thick, is this parcel, the subdivision agreement, has literally been under development for about a decade.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Spennelli, did you remove yourself from the?
I believe earlier, it was kind of, it was talked about, though there is no documentation of the fact, that the traffic engineer said that the purpose of the connection was solely to benefit your, the petitioner's property?
Yes, so as we were preparing, as they were finalizing the case packet, and this condition came up in the wording of it, we had a meeting to discuss it, and that was one of the questions I had for them, was whether it was private or public, because if they were going to ask us to dedicate an easement or not, and they said, no, they weren't going to require the dedication of a public use easement, and that the trail was for, for private use, you know, for the private, private to public connection, so that it would benefit Grayling's parcels and Grayling's users. I mean, and.
I mean, and that was the conversation that we had had.
And just as a clarification from staff, there is no longer any intent to have a roadway or a non-motorized path connecting the petitioner's site to C Street.
We still have to. It's actually one of your conditions on the plat-
Oh, sorry.
Is that we have to show that alignment to do that. So that it's still a requirement that we would connect the roadway that's been built on A3B through A2B and then through that access easement on Clatt's parcel to Peninsula, because Peninsula aligns on Clatt's parcel, A1.
Okay.
But not to the South Anchorage Sports Park.
Right, not to the sports park.
Bigger maps next time.
Am I sorry?
Bigger maps next. The deafening silence.
And again, I know I've asked this question before, but back to the 18-foot gradient. It runs north to south, so the north end is higher up than, or vice versa?
So that if you look at A2B and A3Bs, you're kind of moving down towards Doyon and down towards Clatt. The elevation actually lessened, it's like 12, 13 foot, as you come down towards Doyon. With the building alignment, you know, part of it is, it's one level of building, is that, you know, that the site's kind of falling from the 18-foot, you know, down to the 12, 13-foot, but now we're leveling a building across it. So we're kind of increasing, you know, along, along the entire edge. We're kind of like, we're leveling that out, so then that the highest elevation difference, you know, is maintained.
So the smallest elevation difference is 12 feet, and the highest elevation is 18 feet. The point is, is that the existing gradient right now, if you were to go through the roundabout on C and take a left onto Timber Lane Drive, you immediately drop down. You're below the road. You immediately go down into the sports complex.
Sorry, can you detail that path for me, like, that description as I look at a map?
So what you're looking at, I mean, there is a ridge all the way down, this entire parcel. So I mean, the 12-foot is still here, and you're looking, I mean, you're looking at that elevation difference along the entire length of these two parcels against the park. And so it's greater here than it is here, but it's still like 12-foot difference down at that end.
All right, Commissioner Gardner?
Just want to make sure I understand then, now, the, the road that we were discussing that does connect up through then to C Street. So the language that you suggested using for both cases is a private street and sidewalks on both sides from track A3B to track A1 to the north, which will serve as access from track A3B to Fragment Lot 1. And so the both sides, is that both sides of track A3B? Or what is the both sides referring to there?
So the sidewalks on both sides are the roadway.
Oh, sidewalks on both sides, okay.
Yeah.
And, and where would that private street be?
So that's part of what we're, that requirement is having us look at, is that right now, I'm sorry, this is so small, but right now, the road terminates here, and then here's Peninsula, which is, this is Clatt's parcel right here. This is here. So what we're looking at is how we would align this through here, through the easement we have, and how we would make that connection. So that's what that requirement-
Is figuring that out.
To look at is, yeah, how we're going to actually do that.
Francis?
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, I think that the handout that I handed out, the proposed language by the petitioner, this is just for the plating case. It's not intended for both cases, because the bit about entering into a subdivision agreement. So that is to say, handed this out, Ms. Moore, Ms. Branch spoke to the condition wanting this phrasing. The department agrees to the language that she's requested, and it's only for condition of approval three on the S case, S1247.
Right, yeah, sorry, but, yeah, I think, I think I got that. But as far as the description of the, of the, the street and the sidewalks, that will match the first case, right?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Question for staff, just to kind of give us a little direction moving forward, since we do have this one condition of release of, one condition of approval. Is there a way that the staff recommends we handle that so that we can perhaps address them individually?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there are two cases that you heard. Because they're related, we had one public hearing, and everyone had double the time to speak. So what, what I recommend is that the commission make a motion for approval of the major site plan review, case 2019-0049, subject to staff departments recommended conditions of approval 1 through 15 on pages 12 and 13 of your packet, and that becomes your main motion. And then another commissioner could make a motion to amend the main motion to delete condition of approval five, as the applicant has defended and requested. Having a vote on the amendment by itself segregates that issue and this trail issue, right? And then you could get back to the main motion without threat of, you know, denying the whole case and the implications of that, having to wait around for another year or returning for redesign or any of that. And then after you've dispensed with that case, then you move to the plat, and it's a separate case, and that's, you know, a moving to approve case S12475, subject to conditions 1 through 7 on pages 8 and 9 of your packet, and amending condition of approval number 2 with the language that I've handed out. You could read that into the record. Does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Kind of segueing in this time, I do not believe, it does not appear as though any commissioner has any additional questions or comments for staff or the petitioner. So now would be a good time to make a motion so that we can then debate the merits of any possible amendments. What's the will of the body?
There is a motion by Commissioner Looney?
Okay. Thank you for the direction. In case number 2019-0049, in the major site plan review, I move that we approve the, the case based on the department recommendations on page 12 and 13, numbers 1 through 15.
Seconded by Commissioner Gardner, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, actually, so I'm, I don't plan, actually, this is one of those tough cases. I do not plan to support all the, the conditions of the, I'm sorry, I do plan to support all 15 conditions in the packet.
Based on discussion today, are there any motions to amend the underlying motion? See, Andre's in the queue, so I'm guessing that's a motion by-
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend department recommendation number four to match the wording provided by the petitioner. I believe that-
I believe that is only needed for the next case.
Correct.
Okay. Yep. Cancel that.
Based on the discussion we're having today, and knowing that you don't have to be in favor of the motion, but that it might, there may be merits in discussing it, is there anyone that wants to make a motion to amend based on other discussions that we've had today?
Commissioner Spinelli?
I'll make a motion that we delete recommendation number five to show and construct an eight-foot wide pathway.
Seconded by Commissioner Gardner, would you like to speak to your motion?
It's a tough one. I've, I've built nonsensical trails before that I wasn't in agreement with, but I was told that the plans and the design of the city required them. So I feel your pain. I do intend to actually support my motion. I think that it does not make sense for the current use at this time, and the fact that it is supposed to serve A3B, and the plan we saw entered it between A2B and A3B, and if there was probably something at that time, we could possibly build the trail. I guess I'm just going to support the motion. I'm inclined to relieve the petitioner of the requirement to build the trail.
Commissioner Strike?
This is a question to, to the chair. Can the motion that's on the floor be further amended to incorporate language that based on the current plat and usage of the land as provided this evening, that this recommendation for deletion is subject to the petitioner actually building the proposed facility that they've identified here? Meaning, where I'm getting back is, I can support the motion, but I want to put a, I want to put a clause or a condition in there that this, the acceptance of this deletion is for the sole purpose that that project that they're planning, that they presented to us tonight, is what's built. If that's not built, then I don't want to get rid of the clause.
I'm going to ask staff that question.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, if, you know, we're here to, to review the, the site plan for this particular use. So should the use not take place, then they're going to end up right back here discussing the exact same trail with a new use potentially that goes in.
I see heads nodding here. I see heads nodding here. We're all in agreement.
So I believe an amendment to the amendment would not be needed because it is already understood.
You're telling me it's not needed?
That's correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Spinelli, are you still in the queue? Is that from earlier? Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, I think, well, my thoughts aren't maybe fully clarified, as I had hoped by this point in time, but I think I probably will support the motion, or I intend to at this moment. And that is based on the fact that I, you know, I struggle to see what purpose this trail would ultimately serve in part, because, and I'm happy to be corrected by somebody if I'm wrong about this, my understanding, but that it's, you know, it's connecting to a, to a, to a private facility that doesn't, the trail wouldn't offer a connection to any, anywhere else necessarily. And so, you know, if we're talking about whether it's to the benefit of the people at the, the users of the sports park, I don't think there's necessarily anything on that side of the equation. And for the people at the facility itself, it sounds like the potential benefit is pretty limited, given the nature of the facility.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I, I don't intend to support the amendment. Actually, I do find that, like the petitioner noted, that there, things have changed the last eight to 10 years. You know, the sports park has changed layout, but, you know, but still an open space. The, the development of this property is now assisted living. It's not retail, like it may have been at one time. But I, I still see the value of just connectivity. I guess that's one of my kind of, my things that I'm passionate about, just connectivity, especially non-motorized connectivity all over town. And I see other places like near the Native Hospital, where there's a, there's, to the north of the campus, there's a pathway, and through the Native Hospital properties, there's some private connections of pathways, where I don't really see it benefiting the public per se, but I see the staff from those buildings, and maybe family of, of patients and things like that, who will walk over and, and they spend time in the open space. The open space there is really the University Park area, where they're, they're just kind of hanging out on benches and just using the open space for their benefit. And for this project, I see that there will be quite a few staff. I mean, I didn't really get a number from the petitioner, but I, I expect that 40 to 50 are in that range. But there's also the two lots to the east of this proposed development that could benefit from this. So I don't really see the public in general, but I see this development and its, its core staff and benefits to the, the companies who work here, and to have access to that, that green belt. And that's why I don't intend to support the amendment.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, I'd just like to address some of Commissioner Looney's comments. I guess I'm okay with not building the trail as part of this project, but I do think that as part of the second case for the, for the plat of the frag lot, and this might help with you, because I do agree that connectivity and non-motorized connectivity and kind of building an island where people are trapped in up here, it would be nice to have connection to the park in the future, is that maybe we add a note to the plat to allow for an easement across A2B in the future at the time of development of, say, A3B or the other tracks on A2B. And, because I don't think that they'll be able to, it will be very difficult to get the trail connection without the easement along the back of A2B. So that might, if that was something that we added to the plat, it might help you support the amendment.
At this point in time, I would support the amendment without additional qualifiers. I, I too support connectivity, but what we have is not connectivity that without this plat note seven, that would not have been required. And so in a way, it's almost as if the petitioner here has to meet this additional burden based on a history of amended, reorganized, different plans. And when I'm looking through and following the history of it, I have to end up with the latest memorandum of understanding, which is the last piece, that says that it has to be for the benefit of both parties. I believe it's on page 33. It says, "An appropriate connection location that will benefit both parties." And I understand that there's an email from Parks saying that generally, they like connection. They support features for pedestrian connectivity. However, we also have in the staff packet wording saying that the Parks does not need this. Again, when we look at the traffic engineer, there's a little bit of discrepancy, and they don't point to any actual individual or benefit. They just say that there is a benefit. However, I, I can't make a factual determination on a speculation or a non-supported fact. And so to me, I feel what is before us is an evolution of plat seven, which is finalized at a memorandum of agreement, that says that if there's a trail connectivity, it has to be at the benefit of the parties, and both parties are saying they don't want it. That's the fact I see. And so I would support the amendment as stated. I have further questions as towards what Commissioner Spinelli was looking for an easement. I'm not sure. I'm always a little hesitant to spring up new ideas that haven't been run by the petitioner or staff at this late of an hour, as I'm not sure the ramifications of that. So I'm not, at this point, I'm not sure if I would support an easement like that. But yeah, at this point, I intend to vote in favor of the amended motion as stated.
Commissioner Looney?
Actually, I have a clarification for staff, or as far as the- Actually, I have a clarification for staff, or as far as the procedure here. Do we need to have a unanimous vote for all of our amendments?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Spinelli?
I just wanted to respond to one of your comments that I heard multiple times from the petitioner that they're willing to look at this in the future and, and down the road and if it makes sense at the time. So that, that's kind of where I was coming from on that is that I've seen that they indicated that. So I just wanted to, if the property did change hands and then A2, these other two lots were developed, then a plat note would kind of allow for, allow for that.
I am seeing rumblings from staff, and if you wish to enlighten us on anything, I'm sure we'll take any enlightenment that can be offered.
Just something from the peanut gallery that we have no comment.
And I am seeing no one else in the queue, so call for vote. And that motion does not pass. So we are left with the original motion on the floor. Are there any other motions to amend? Would anyone like to speak to the underlying motion? Perhaps cite some findings that would support our motion?
So as we are now, we are on the main motion for approval of the major site plan review with all 15 of the staff's recommendations now incorporated. Correct?
Correct. Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, I'll just note that it seems to me that consistent with the analysis in the staff packet, well, first of all, this is a use as I understand it, it's approved by right, and the only reason we're doing this review is due to a special limitation. And with that in mind, looking at the approval criteria in 2103-180F, I find that that criteria is met with the multiple conditions that, that have been included to address deficiencies that were noted in that criteria.
Commissioner Strike?
This is a question to the staff. With the, with the motion in play now, with number five incorporated, how much latitude does the city and your department have in working with the petitioner in identifying and aligning, if this passes, in aligning that pathway in a manner that is least restrictive and so forth to the petitioner? How much leeway do you, does your staff, does your department have in this regard?
Well, the intention of the traffic engineer is to allow maximum flexibility about the placement, location of the trail and the future design of it. That, I mean, what will happen after tonight is that the applicant would propose something and it would be looked at by reviewing agencies.
If, if, if the engineers and staff, when looking at this at the broader detail, find that this number five requirement isn't easily met during the construction phase and so forth, what options do you have?
They have the option of returning to the commission and stating that it, you know, wasn't feasible for one reason or another.
So that, something that would allow this project to move forward with this re-plat review, plat review and the plan, plan review and plat review. This clause here isn't a, it's a requirement, but you still have to work out the details. And if the details don't make sense, they have an opportunity to come back before us to waive it, or do you come back before us to waive it?
Through the Chair, Mr. Strike, if for some, I mean, the, the intent behind the condition is to provide maximum flexibility. It's directive in that they have to provide the trail, but the location and all the particulars, there's flexibility there for them to, to come to the municipality and work out those details with us. Should there be an impasse, the petitioner could come back and request to come back to the commission to deal with, with the disagreement that, that they may have with the reviewing agencies that would be reviewing the, the trail alignment and allow for the commission to be the decision-making body.
And with your knowledge of the plan review, of the purpose for the construction that would take place, anticipated to take place, you would work then with the petitioner in, because it's makes, this still, this, this pathway makes no sense for the residents, but as one of the commissioners stated, there's other reasons for that pathway as well. I'm just trying to continue the path forward to the development and the completion of a project.
Understood. You know, it's, it's the planning department's intent to work with the petitioner and provide as much flexibility as possible. There are design criteria that have to be met, so we, we can't necessarily compromise on that without the, you know, the granting of a variance, but certainly we are willing to work with them and provide them all the flexibility that we can.
And we, and you can always come back to the commission?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff as well. Is both the requirement that the pathway be paved and it be eight feet wide required by a design criteria?
Madam Chair, I don't have a design criteria in front of me at the moment. I would have to look at the design criteria manual. I haven't, I haven't conferred with it recently, so I don't know that, that this particular trail would have to be, I assume because it's a condition that it would be an eight-foot-wide paved trail, but I haven't looked at it to, to verify that. We wouldn't otherwise require an eight-foot trail that doesn't, that would be outside of what the design criteria would require.
Yeah, I think the eight-foot-wide paved trail came from the letter that Commissioner Strike mentioned from the president that said that there shall be a continuous eight-foot-wide paved trail connection. So what I'm considering proposing is amending condition five to be show and construct a pathway from Fragment Lot One to South Anchorage Sports Park property boundary that complies with design criteria.
Through the Chair, Ms. Bailey, I recommend sticking with the wording as, as it's written. Eight-foot-wide paved pathway is a standard trail configuration. And the previously designed, you know, trail on the, on the track to the south had an eight-foot-wide paved pathway that was built to ADA accessible standard. So...
Madam Chair, I'd also, for the subdivision packet, the S.12475, if you turn to page 93, the private development, they're saying the petitioner shall resolve need to construct municipal stands and non-motorized connection as shown on typical section number 20-6 of the municipality of Anchorage standard specifications. So that's their, that's, they're citing specifically the section of what, how they want that built, which is section 20-6 of Mass.
And just as a clarification, and, but does 20-6 require an eight-foot paved?
That I don't know.
I believe that it does.
Madam Chair, your language is fine. We'll work out the particulars. It requires them to, to build it to a standard.
Yeah, I, my main concern is I don't want to put in an arbitrary limitation.
It is absolutely not arbitrary. However, your language still works.
The condition of approval was vetted and reviewed and edited by private development.
And I trust the staff on that. Thank you for dealing with me getting into the particulars. I do not wish to make an amendment on that. Any other findings or comments before we move for a vote? Commissioner Strike?
There was no public testimony provided or identified and that the Bay Shore plat, while there was a memorandum for their meeting, really did not express a consensus one way or another regarding the access. They did, they did ask the question, but that was it.
Thank you. And call for vote? That motion passes. Would anyone like to make a motion on case S.12475? Commissioner Spinelli?
In the matter of case S.12475, I will make a motion that we approve with department recommendations one through seven.
And would that be as, to, as amended by staff? Or proposed to be remem, actually, sorry, staff, should we do this as a separate amendment?
Yeah.
Or, okay. All right. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Spinelli, would you like to offer an amendment?
Yes, I'd plan to make a, I would like to make a second motion to amend the wording of recommendation number three.
Number two, I believe.
Okay, number two. Sorry, this is, yeah. To the one that was handed to us, would you like me to read it or?
Yeah, if you could read it.
Show a private street and sidewalks on both sides of, from tract A3B to tract A1 to the north and enter into a subdivision agreement with private development to construct a portion of private street which will serve as access from tract A3B to Frag, Fragment Lot One.
And I'm guessing that's seconded by Commissioner Strike?
No, question.
Oh, question by Commissioner Strike.
In clarification of the amendment, we are amending number two.
Correct.
Not number three.
That is correct.
Correct.
And is there a second, seconded by Commissioner Looney? Anyone wishing to speak to the amendment? I would just like to say that it was supported by both the petitioner as well as staff. It seems to provide just some detailed upkeep. Seeing no one else, call for vote. That motion passes. Any other motions to amend the underlying motion or further discussion on this motion And question for staff, since a lot of the findings would be similar, do we have to restate those for this case as well?
Madam Chair, you can combine the cases and read.
Okay. So unless, is there anyone else wishing to make any additional findings on this motion? Seeing no one else in...
Again, there was no public testimony.
Can you, oh, sorry.
And again, there was no public testimony and no, no parties weighed in.
All right. And call for a vote? That motion passes. All right. And is there a motion on the floor? Just a reminder for commissioners, if you can keep your staff packets for the items that are postponed, so don't throw those out. I believe there is a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Strike and there is a seconded by, by Commissioner Gardner. Meeting is adjourned.